Uh, specials members, uh, any specials council member? Any on my left, you know, my right council member Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of the presence of caution, I'm accusing myself of item 12 because my wife's employer has worked with an organization on this item in the past. Thank you.
All right. Still a test.
Please join us if you can. Yeah, join us.
All right.
At least we know the systems work.
Yes.
So, we're good.
Councilmember Hernandez, you have a lot of engineers with you, which we may need this morning.
There's a lot of math behind me. I feel it. A lot of numbers, a lot of calculating. My brother's an engineer. Literally whole whiteboards full of numbers. Please join us. Thank you so much.
So, we take a look at item number one, and it's regarding the dedication of an easement and also following up with subsequent enforcement of the easement. Well, here's the issue we have. I actually spoke to a gentleman, and he had an issue. He obtained a type R permit. Uh, he still got fined, but it was an event he held right on a public easement nearby this area over on West Century Boulevard. And interestingly enough, um, he told me about a little story where he had obtained a memo from the city attorney's office, uh, saying that, quote, "We do not prosecute corporate defendants." Now, why would you say that? Well, interestingly enough, if you take a look at some of the history on enforcement and the career history of the city attorney herself, Heidi Felton Soto, she actually worked for the Arthur Andersen accounting firm.
So, Speaker, you're welcome to speak during general, but I, I fail to see how this is connected to item one. So, I'm gonna ask you, please stick to the agenda items for the first three minutes, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
I'll explain it to you. My worry is that, you know, we have these easements, just like item number two, but how are we gonna enforce on who trespasses on the easement? Who violates the blockading of the public right of way ease on the easement? And that's my problem, because we know from the city attorney's office, from the Sierra Club, that they don't enforce the situation.
Hmm, I, so, I think this is best left for general. Again, item number one is a very specific dedication of an easement. So, if you'd like to speak to the items, you can, or you can move to general public comment.
Yep, we'll move on to item number three as part of the multiple general item. We have an issue here regarding bonds. Now, what's the issue with bonds? The bond issue is that you have to disclose the method of payment publicly, which is not disclosed here. And again, how are we gonna enforce any sort of wrongdoing when you don't disclose?
Can you hold this timer really quick? I actually couldn't hear which item. Hold on, I paused your time. You said item three?
Yes.
So, item number three is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general.
Yeah, we can still make public comment, even though it's not gonna be heard on the record for public comment.
This is, hold on, it's not your opportunity to speak, your time is paused. So, just as a reminder to everyone, you have an initial, up to an initial three minutes, that's one minute per item, for the items open for public comment. Um, as a courtesy, the, again, the items that are open for public comment are one and two, and items fifteen through twenty-three. So, Speaker, I'm going to start your clock, and you can use the remaining one minute and twenty-one seconds to speak to those items, or if you'd like, you can move to general public comment, but you will not receive another warning. Go ahead.
Yep, so, we're gonna talk about the, uh, twenty-two annual budget resolution, and we have, again, a crisis happening in the city regarding the city's budget, and it's likely because the city attorney does not prosecute violators to actually obtain revenue for that budget in the form of fines, whether they be the blockade of the public right of way, whether they be a corporate entity that is committing criminal acts and prosecuting them and obtaining fines in such a way. And we know that because the city attorney herself, in fact, worked for the Arthur Andersen accounting firm that was the same firm used by Enron to commit massive wide-scale fraud all across the nation. And again, quote, "It takes one conviction, that's all it takes. It takes just one conviction for a corporation to go down." Well, Heidi Felton Soto is right in that regard, and she's scared to actually give money to the city in a legal way, because she knows people will expose her. That's why we have to thank Michelle McGinnis for being able to depose her, and that's why some of that money could have gone to a budget by prosecuting people like Scientology for their public right-of-way violations on L. Ron Hubbard Way. And what that will move over to, uh, the general public comment period.
Okay, so you have one minute.
We have an issue here where you have a known criminal. The biggest gang in Los Angeles is, in fact, not the LASD or the LAPD. It is, in fact, the prosecutorial gang. It is the prosecutorial gang of the city attorney's office and the DA's office. That is the biggest gang in Los Angeles. This family knows it, that's why they're trying to run away from the city attorney himself, and it's a major problem. The biggest gang in Los Angeles is Heidi Felce Soto, and how do you have a sitting attorney for the city attorney's office who literally worked for the same accounting firm that Enron is known for committing wide-scale criminal acts, fraud being one of them? That's what Los Angeles constitutes. It's led by two criminals, Heidi Felton Soto and Nathan Hockman, but in particular, the vindictive nature of Heidi Felton Soto, who was sanctioned a quarter million dollars for a vexatious and malicious litigation in her own divorce case. She was disobeying court orders outright by withdrawing from community funds and issuing over four hundred subpoenas. That's what Heidi Felton Soto is, a criminal.
First one, number one, and I wanna do a thing that's called, like, compare and contrast. And, okay, 'cause it, it is about, right, giving up an easement, and I have concerns about that, because it has to do with trust. You know, uh, this past year, I've just seen how the city has handled, uh, all the permits and everything with L. Ron Hubbard and, and all the, the, everything with their, um, illegal planters, and I lost trust. I did, uh, 'cause the city didn't do anything. They didn't come, I've been here how many times, and Mr. Hugo doesn't like to listen to it, 'cause he, you know, he doesn't wanna hear the truth, which is okay, you know? But the thing is, that it took a bunch of people standing up and pushing back and getting a CAS report and just to, to finally get somewhere to get the ADA things eased up and, and certain things. So, I don't trust you guys to really be looking into this easement to make sure that it's correct. Why do we have to give away city property?
So, you've exhausted your one minute on item number one?
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, how about number two? Um, okay, so, continuing with this place, I have the same concerns that I had in number one, as far as not trusting, because of all the, you know, what I saw, your lack of doing anything with the Scientology issues that I've been a year now coming here for. And although there has been improvements, so, I would like to thank you, and I am gonna, you know, I'd like to thank Mr. Hugo for that, 'cause I'm, I'm thinking that he may have something to do with that. I give credit where credit's due. But I'm concerned. I don't understand, why do we have to give up our land? Why do we have to, like, you can never recreate real estate, you know? That's, it's, and if the city owns it, I can see give it, doing like the adopt the median type of thing, and maybe letting them adopt it to where they, you know, um, you know, take care of it, put their name up or whatever, but why do we have to turn it over to them, to their ownership? Does that make sense? Okay, I had, I did my minute right. Thank you, I got you. See, I, I like that we have, like, these, like, we can cut, you kinda look at me and I can, I, I, I'm reading you loud and clear. Okay, so then, I wanna do about the fire emergency. You know, let's give, you know, I wanna give some kudos to Councilwoman Park. I think, you know, she stood up and she just really took leadership during, after the fire, and that was, I know, like, a crisis, right? You know, and you went through hell, I bet, but you, I felt that you kept your dignity and you kept fighting for your, your constituents, and so, I thank you for that. So, if you feel that this emergency needs to continue, then I'm going to, you know, say yes. But can you please also, in the meantime, ask Mr. Hugo to do a better job with the Scientology stuff? Just, just put in a good word for me, please, ma'am. And, you know, and so, I do appreciate you for that.
General public comment?
Okay, general public comment. Shout out to Smoke and Scan, you know, 'cause they keep you all, they're all watching you too, and making sure you're all, see, they're, they're watching you, like, not listen, Mr. McCosker, oh my gosh, 'cause he's like the good one. He was always the good one, and now, Smoke and Scan, are you catching that? But anyway, all right, I have a permit. The city does not think we're violent, scary criminals trying to, they get what we're doing, we're protesting. So, on Father's Day, and I want, I'm hoping Smoke and Scan will be there, at least, you know, eyes on to, to see and, and help us celebrate this, that, 'cause we are taking a stand against the ADA abuses and family separation. It's peaceful, it's, everything is about peace and, and loving the people in those buildings. We've been here fighting for the people in that big blue building, but they're starting to send people who out in the, you know, the protester community to antagonize and to assault. One protester was assaulted, one was menaced, and one came, the same guy came to me too. He left me alone, he didn't do anything to me. I mean, I'm, hopefully, he was scared that I would roll him, because I would, but...
Speaker, your time has expired. Next, good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, everybody. This is some saying of our holy prophet, Muhammad, peace and blessing of Allah be upon him. My name is Zahir Malik, and I'm from Muslim Ahmadiya community. I'm gonna read. He is not a believer whose stomach is filled while his neighbor goes hungry. Also, he advised to his companion, thank you, he advised to his companion, if you cook a stew, increase its broth and share it with your neighbors. Thank you very much. God bless you guys all.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I'm just speaking on the general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Olu Shaye Banjo. Um, I'm here to speak on the, on the general comment. I'm a member of LA CAN and a resident living in CD fourteen at, in Skid Row, at the Rainbow Hotel, uh, for almost, I've been there for almost thirteen years. I'm here today because the conditions in our building are terrible. We, we, we were formerly part of the Skid Row Housing Trust, but now we're owned by the Heart Management Company, and right now, it is, uh, we don't have any security. We are, units are subpar, rats, roaches, and all that good stuff is happening, and too many tenants are, are left to feel unsafe, including, um, just crime all over the place. Um, our voices matter, and you need to hear us, because we're not going anywhere, and please support the anti-harassment tenant bill, and that's all I have to say.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Stacy Segarra-Bolinger, Clyde, and Audit L.A.
Inspector Mayor's and council members.
Good morning. Uh, before you begin, feel free to, uh, adjust the microphone as you see fit, and which items would you like to speak to?
Non, non-agenda item.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead, sir.
Inspector Mayor and council members, Assalamualaikum Warahmatullah. This is Imam Malik Tariq Mahmood, missionary of Ahmadiya Muslim community. I'm going to share only one verse of the Holy Quran to see what the Holy Quran teaches us. God says in the Holy Quran, "Worship God and associate nothing with him, and to parents do good, and to relatives, orphans, the needy, the near neighbor, the neighbor farther away, the companion at your side, the traveler, and those whom you write and possess." Indeed, Allah does not like those who are self-deluding and boastful. Thank you very much.
First minute. I'm here in support of demands of the Keep L.A. Housed Coalition. As a renter myself, I am fully aware of how our system far too often punishes the hard-working while rewarding abroad laziness captured in the exploitive practices of rent collecting. This despite the fact that basic necessities are what are all that motivates most people that stand here before you to address this body, basic necessities such as simple peace of mind, comfort, and joy that shelters so often provides. Shelters for our dreams and memories and lives lived. I have to ask myself what glimmers of hope I could, I could find growing up or walk, winding up on Skid Row and its dangerous atrocities and housing solutions. I have to wonder, in three seconds, how to conclude. I'm here to, to support housing rights and the unhoused. Thank you very much.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. General Dogon, George Herod, and Shamika Ath.
And before the next speaker begins, just as an announcement to everyone in the room, so, I understand that time can go rather quickly. If you have additional comments that you would like to make, or if we run out of time to hear you speak today or any other day, you're more than welcome to leave additional written comments at lacouncilcomment.com, that you can find that URL either by a quick Google search, it should be one of the first things, if not the first thing that comes up, or you can find the URL at the top of every council agenda, or towards the top. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Groot. All items and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item fifteen, um, is related to the declaration of local emergency relating to the wind storms and subsequent fires that happened back in January. This body loves to declare an emergency, and it, it does help us, um, open revenues for funding and action that we wouldn't have access to were we not to declare emergency. Um, but I just wonder how many times we're gonna continue to renew emergency resolutions without taking substantive steps to, um, deal with the fallout from those emergencies. There was a huge benefit concert for the fires, raised something like a hundred million dollars, and it looks like most of that funding has gone to administrative costs to the 501(c)(3) that facilitated and were the beneficiary of that. So, um, the council should maybe look into those types of fraudulent events and get that funding to the people who really need it. We have some REAP, uh, motions on this agenda as well. Um, it's been said before that REAP works, um, but clearly, it's not. Clearly, the rent escrow account program is not a deterrent or an incentive for landlords to do their jobs, abate when they get notices, keep their units livable, because we see so many of these rent escrow motions on the agenda regularly. And I think that if, um, after a certain amount of time of an account being in escrow, one of these REAP motions, if as time goes on, the percentage of that, um, account funding that the landlord gets back would be reduced, that might be an incentive. If they abate in thirty days, they get a hundred percent back. If they abate in over sixty days, maybe the tenant gets to keep thirty percent when that account closes. If it takes them more than ninety days, I think the tenant should get to keep all of their rent, because they've been living in subpar conditions, and we know that just from the existence of these REAP accounts. So, let's go to twenty-three. Um, this is a motion to, um, essentially, I think, not grant raises that were previously bargained for, um, to help the budget. It says, um, "To not allow a percent, four percent salary adjustment for non-represented employees." I assume adjustment was meant to be a raise, not a reduction, um, and I just want to know if this body or the highly-paid electeds and administrators that work for the city have made any such adjustments? If you're reducing your own salaries or reducing your own staffing to account for it and not just offloading that to the, the lowest-paid, uh, workers and departments that are already spread thin? To be honest, I don't know what field deputies really do, other than act as political agents for the council members they work for, and those are taxpayer-funded jobs.
General public comment?
We know that private equity is buying up a lot of housing, and it is plain to see that it's driving up the price of rent. Nithya says, "We just need to build more, but when we build more homes, we should ask who it's for." Council, private equity should be banned from owning rentals, not only single-family homes, every kind of rental. You can gather information, but then we gotta see some action. Thank you, Tim, for paying attention to that one. Shout out to Smoke and Scan, and I hope that along with single-family housing, we can, um, get corporations and private equity out of the rental market altogether.
Next speaker? Two, one minute, go ahead.
General Dogon, shut it down, organized with LA CAN. I'm here today with other members of our committee, and we're here today to support the former Skid Row Housing Trust tenants. You know, for like ten years, I stayed in, uh, Skid Row Housing Trust building, uh, at the Sanborn on Main Street. The conditions got so bad, I ended up leaving, got to the point I wouldn't live there for free. So, it ain't no surprise to where these buildings end at today, and, you know, in the conservatorship and then, uh, being sold off to a private developer. But what is a surprise is the twist that the mayor put down, right? Instead of the city taking responsibility, right, and having a chance to really, you know, own some business for the, the buildings for some people, they end up punting your responsibility to private developers, already knowing what they gonna do. It's all about money to them. So, now, uh, you created these anti-tenants harassments, so we ain't got no other choice and no other opportunity, no other avenue to come here but to tell y'all to do what y'all, y'all voted to do, is that y'all gonna get, make sure that people, landlords, take care of these buildings. So, that's what we here to do.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker?
My name is Shamika. I'm an organizer with LA CAN, and I, I reside in CD fourteen in the Skid Row area. As a coalition member of Keep L.A. Housed, we support the, those demands, including capping the rent at three percent. I'm here today in solidarity with tenants in Skid Row living in buildings formerly part of the Skid Row Housing Trust. This city council passed Tahoe Tenants Anti-Harassment Ordinance, and we are really curious what you've all feel your responsibility is to tenants in those hotels facing uninhabitable conditions. What does enforcement look like with a landlord who was practically given buildings? Whether in a tent or an SRO hotel, folks living in Skid Row are folk forced to live under conditions apparently accepted by this council. What are your plans?
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Morning, City Council. Uh, my name is Mr. Pancake, uh, woo, with LA CAN and CD fourteen, general public comment. Aware that developer Leo Puschno Call acquired seventeen former Skid Row Housing Trust buildings and has not done enough in addressing habitability issues in the buildings. Reports there is no security, safety issue, working elevators, infestation, plumbing, eighty-eight tenants being impacted. City, we ask you to wake up, fix it, keep folks housed, housing gives a human right. We're supporting the demands of Keep L.A. Housed also. So, that's what I have to say, Mr. Pancake. All positive people, housing gives a human right. Let's fix this city. It's all about responsibility. Isabel Heather Hutt, City Council, let's listen. It's all about responsibility. Can I get it right on?
Next speaker?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Christina Boyer. I'm an attorney of public counsel and a member of the Keep L.A. Housed Coalition. I'm here to urge council, when the time comes, to make common sense updates to our rent stabilization formula that hasn't been updated in forty years. The Housing Department has reported this is an unfair formula. To afford a one-bedroom apartment in LA, you need to make nearly a hundred thousand dollars. With the city's impending budget crisis, impending layoffs, and slashing of Section Eight, and what is supposed, will surely be soaring cost of living, we need our city to protect us now more than ever. People are barely hanging on and changing this formula to make it as protective of tenants as possible. It's a free way to stem the homelessness crisis and a budget crisis. We need a fair Larso now with an annual rent increase formula based on sixty percent CPI, a three percent cap, and no floor, and eliminating unfair bumps for utilities and extra tenants. New rent increases go into effect in July, so we need to move this now. Thank you.
And before the next speaker begins, I just wanna make an announcement, and then, also, Speaker, I, I recognize I cannot tell you what to say or which words to use, uh, but I just want to, um, uh, mention that there is a very young child here, uh, and so, again, you can say what you wanna say, as long as it's on the agenda, uh, but for anybody here, you, you may hear offensive words, you may hear offensive subject matter. Um, if you do so, then you, you are more than welcome to exit the room temporarily. Uh, you can pop in headphones, you can also do, um, what kids often do, which is earmuffs, or you can stick your fingers in your ears, but just, uh, please bear with us and be patient. Thank you. Good morning, Speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Uh, start with, uh, item number fifteen, uh, with extra soy sauce. Fifteen, Jen's the song. Item number sixteen with, uh, actual shrimp. 他骚动你的心藏住你的眼睛天地都安静他骚动你的心藏住你的眼睛 Now, let's move on to item number seventeen. Item number seventeen with no soy sauce. 月光完全是我心魔月光完全是我心魔
I'm gonna general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, council. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Corey Patterson. I've returned to you again, uh, after eighteen months. I received, pardon me, I, I'm a survivor of the Skid Row Housing Trust collapse. I've lived in my building, the Lincoln Building, for eight years this coming June fifteenth. We still have rats and roaches that have never been taken care of. We have a non-working fire system. Uh, we have a unbolted front door, we have actually a bolted front door. Uh, I, I know we have less than a minute. I'm gonna say, after working with multiple different agencies, entities across the nation, what we've had for this scenario after eighteen months is a disgrace. After transmitting these units for less than eight thousand, three hundred dollars per unit, we're left to, to still defend for ourselves. I shouldn't be having to hold a battery port from my property manager from yesterday evening trying to come home to my building. Please, we need some help.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
That's right. So, let's see here, number three.
Item number three is not open for public comment.
Okay, well, I can't blame my pup, but he's not here. Item number one, is that okay, motherfucker? motherfucker? Yes. So let's see here. It's a Tracy Park item. Century Boulevard for an easement. See, Tracy Park's hiding a secret. She's got a different name, and Century Boulevard's looking like a complete shithole, Tracy. I drove down there yesterday. I'll be going down Friday. Shame on Tracy Park. Shame on her staff. That's why we ordered a pay cut of your staff. You're doing a horrible job, with the exception of William, who continues to do a perfect job covering your ass. Let's give William the staffer a hand. Now we get to number two. Let's see here, CD 11 again. Into Aviation Boulevard, another airport issue. Now, what's going on with Tracy Park and the goddamn fucking LAX? They're gonna be opening up a new choo-choo train. Woo-hoo. On Friday, Unisys is gonna ride it. In fact, Unisys is gonna become the first person to ever ride a subway from the ghetto over to LAX. Let's give Hamburger Hernandez a hand. What you got? Right, jailbreaking the peasants? Now, let's see what else we got here. What else should I talk on? Come on, speak up. See here, every fucking thing. Adams for public hearing. Here we go. Let's see. A local emergency? There ain't no goddamn emergency. Fire's over. The fire was put out. Look at that. Even Nazarian knows was scratching his head. The fire's over. He keeps scratching his head. That's why he's going completely bald. Look at that. It's horrible, isn't it? Buckethead knows the fire's over. Hamburger Hernandez, she knows the fire's over. So why are we still there?
Okay, so at this point, you're not on topic, and you're repetitive. So this is your only warning. Please stick to the agenda items.
Well, I'm repetitive because I'm mentally retarded, dummy. Now we get number 10. Rent escrow account, Heather Hutt, the queen of the ghetto. The queen is allowing the rent escrow program to be removed from a shithole on South Third Avenue. Oh, wait, that's Bob. That's a nice area, CD 10. Why are they in REAP? Aren't they getting enough rent, Bob? Isn't that where the colored folks go, Bob, over at CD 10, over Third Avenue? That's where the upper-class colors go, as opposed to the poor. And then we have Marquez's item, sleazy Marquez at South Venice Avenue. A complete total ghetto shithole. Now for the general comment.
General public comment?
I got Tracy Park on a subpoena. I got fucking Rodriguez, known as Mooney Cow Cunt Regus. They spelled her name wrong. It's M-O-I-C-O-W, for the record. Mooney Cow Cunt Regus, C-U-N-T-R-O-I-G-U-E-S-Z. They're both gonna testify against the city in favor of the Alliance plaintiffs. Now, this is what Unisys wanted all along when she ran for office. Now I don't see her out there supporting the Alliance. Why? What fucking change? Then look at that up there. Jingo up there. You took and stole all the money, fool? Where's the motherfucking money? Where's the $2 billion? And let's not forget who we need to call as a witness, everybody. Nithya Raman noodle. Noodle, 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 noodle. The queen who's been stealing the money the last two years. Fuck the city council and fuck your mothers.
Your time has expired.
Good morning. I'm sorry for the...
Not your fault. I, I apologize. It's a tough act to follow. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I'm doing general public.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, good morning. My name is Jessica. I am a member of LA Can, a resident of Council District 14, and I've lived at The Produce for four years. I'm here today because conditions in our building are unacceptable. There are rats, there's mold, and the bathrooms are filthy. There's often feces on the floors, walls, and toilets. Maintenance shows up maybe once or twice a week. Security is either absent, or they're just, or they're just there for a couple hours, usually on their phones, not protecting anyone. This council passed the tenant anti-harassment ordinance, but what does that look like for people living on Skid Row? How is it being enforced? Because we're not seeing it. The city signed off on this, on the sale of my building and 16 others for the, for next to nothing. So I ask you, what is your responsibility to us, the tenants, who are being forced to live in uninhabitable and unsafe conditions? We need action. We need enforcement, and we need accountability now. I support the demands of the Keep L.A. Housed conditions. Oh, Collysey. I don't know how to say that word.
Uh, good morning, Adam, LA Can. General public comment?
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Groth, thank you for the instructions about giving written comment. Does, do you know if the council members read those as opposed to not listening when people, when tenants from Skid Row come in and speak to them? Do they actually read the things that people send in, or is that just a, another empty thing that you're asking people to do? Um, here today to support the demands of the Stay Housed LA Coalition in solidarity with tenants from multiple buildings formerly part of the Skid Row Housing Trust. Knowing that this council proudly passed the updated tenant anti-harassment ordinance, what does implementation look like? What does implementation look like across 17 buildings this city signed off on selling for just over $8,000 per unit? 17 buildings with persistent issues around habitability, bugs and roaches, mold, lack of security, lack of mailboxes. What is the city's responsibility for signing off on the sale of these buildings to a developer? Last week at The Produce, that this council recently took out of REAP, a person known to management who had been banned from the building walked in with a gun. LAPD showed up and brandished their weapons in the hallways, waking up and freaking out tenants. The individual with the gun was not found, but what does security look like that a person banned from the building can come in with a gun? What does the Royal City Council plays in protecting tenants in Skid Row?
Speaker, your time has expired. And just as an FYI, so if you leave a written public comment at la council dot com, it will ask you to include a council file number. That comment is actually a part of the record. It gets put into the council file along with any motions, any reports that's available both for the public review and for the elected and their staff.